Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the City Council Meeting for October 17th, 2018. And at this time, could I please have Pastor Steve Hammond come forward from Bethel Community Church for the opening prayer?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to be in this place to conduct the business of our city. We ask your blessings upon this proceeding. We ask your blessing upon our mayor and City Council, our city employees and department heads. We pray that you bless them, bless their families, and bless our city, Father. Well, we come to you tonight, and we remember that this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we know that you're the great physician. We pray healing upon everyone who is battling cancer. We pray breakthroughs in the medical realm that would bring an end to this terrible disease that's plagued so many people. We look to you for the answers and direction for our city, that we may bring health, safety, and security to all of our citizens, that we may live in prosperity and dignity for all. And we give you all glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of October 17th, 2018. And Chief, would you lead us in the flags for it?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Fariah.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Salavara.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fariah.
I'll move to accept the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos.
I second that.
Motion by Fariah, second by Santos, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, presentations. Proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And do we have someone here to accept the proclamation?
Oh. You want someone else to do it then? Okay. Thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, before you have the members of the Los Banos Fire Department. And they are responsible for what has happened in raising the tremendous amount of funds each year that they raise for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as you can see, this year, we have pink shirts with mustaches. And we can't thank them enough for what they've done. So, who's, Lupe, are you going to be the first person?
I guess so.
Okay, let's go.
First of all, thank you for having us here. We appreciate it. This year, we raised over $5,800 bucks for the city. That money, like I said, from last year, it stays in the city for people going through cancer treatments or anything they're going for. So, we help them out in that way, and that money gets dispersed here locally. I want to thank, first of all, Cassandra. She's an essential part of this process that we did. She helped out with a lot of motivation and getting behind us for getting these shirts done. She was part of the design this year for the adult shirts. We did, do have two designs this year. We had one for the kids, and it was a dalmatian with pink bows around it instead of the polka dots with a fire hose. You guys will see them around town. So, there was two different designs, which were for kids and adults. Next year, who knows? We just asked the community if they want to help out. You know, if you guys think of different designs, just let us know. Some other people we'd like to thank, clubs, businesses, organizations, different departments in the city that helped us out, Local 4703, the Firefighters Association, volunteers with the fire department, they were essential in this also, PD, Mary Lou and Rochelle, they were a big integral part also, helping us out with phone calls and trying to get the orders together. And lastly, the image graphics, Imagine Graphics from Merced did the design, or not the designs, but the shirt and the printing and all that. So, they helped us out a lot. But like I said, next year, let's try to get another big, big rush for these shirts and get that money back out into the community. And appreciate everything. And actually, the whole citizens of Los Banos, thank you for everything, all your support and your donations. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, at this time, I would like to read this proclamation, recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. During the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recognize the women and men who courageously fight to survive, detect, treat, prevent, and support survivors of this devastating disease, as well as honor the loving memory of those who lost their lives because of breast cancer. According to the American Cancer Society, this year, more than 260,000 women and approximately 2,600 men will likely be diagnosed with breast cancer. Although the statistics are frightening, we are encouraged to know that survival rates have drastically improved in the recent years due to increased awareness and innovative advancements in early detection and treatment. American physicians, researchers, public health professionals, advocates have made tremendous progress in the fight against breast cancer, which is evident by the decline in its mortality rates and this disease nationwide. Each life is precious, and for that reason, we continue to pursue greater understanding of this disease, support pioneering research, and promote effective prevention strategies, and ensure broad access to health care and screening. Together, we can usher in a new area, era of hope in the fight against breast cancer and the anticipated, it's victorious day when this disease no longer plagues our nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos to hereby proclaim, proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and ask the citizens of Los Banos to wear pink in the effort to raise awareness, to celebrate survivors, and to encourage those in the treatment of cancer. Thank you so much for your dedication. Thank you so much for what you've done year after year after year. Thank you. Chief, do you want to add a few words?
No, I'm good. Lupe did a fantastic job. The association worked hard to get this done. The entire community comes together to make it happen. So, thank you very much.
And remember that phrase, the entire community that comes together. You're the organizers, the catalyst, and without that, you can't have the community's support. So, it goes hand in hand. So, thank you, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
No, I'm good. Lupe did a fantastic job. The association worked hard to get this done.
The entire community comes together to make it happen. So, thank you very much.
And remember that phrase, the entire community that comes together. You're the organizers, the catalyst, and without that, you can't have the community's support. So, it goes hand in hand. So, thank you, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, new city employee introductions. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Fagen, our Public Works Director, and he is going to introduce two new employees to you.
Mayor, Council members, it's really a pleasure to introduce these two gentlemen. They're both operations managers. The one thing that, as you know us in Public Works, we've gone over a lot of turnover, mainly because of people retiring. And for myself and the Assistant Public Works Director, Greg, I'm taking the privilege, we're getting a little long in the tooth also. So, it's not important what projects always that you retire with, because projects get done. What's important is the people that you leave behind us. We have really struck gold with these two individuals. They're very educated, very motivated, and they're coming in with some really good ideas. So, we're really happy about that. But let me just, I'm going to introduce them in terms of when they were hired, not in age. So, you're going to be first. First, we have, to your right, would be William Vai, and he's been in Los Banos since 1977. He raises two daughters here. He's a Navy veteran. He does have a BA in public administration, but in 2018, he actually got his master's in public administration. So, he, it's very important to have that. It really shows in already some of the memos and stuff I'm getting from that division. It's wonderful. By the way, he's our new Public Works Operations Manager. He worked for CCID five years before he came to the city, and he joined the city in March of 2017 as our streets foreman. And then, when the opening came up for the Public Works Operations Manager, he competed for it and won that opening, and has shown a lot of great ideas, very responsive, which you need at that position. And then, these, this is really the center of where things happen, to tell you the truth. We dictate a lot of stuff, and these guys make sure it gets done. So, it's, I'll let them talk afterwards after I introduce them, but that's William, William Vai. So, we're very happy to have him. Now, on your left is this young gentleman. It's our new Parks and Recreation Operations Manager. Really is bringing some nice ideas to this position. He was raised in Beaverton, Oregon, which we don't hold against him. I don't know, I love Oregon. He does have a bachelor's degree from Oregon State. And he also, from Arizona State University, got his master's in public administration also. So, both of these managers have that experience in school, and presentations are very professional that they give me. It's wonderful to have. When he was going to Oregon State, he did, he did his lot of maintenance work in community parks and natural areas. And then, when he was in Arizona State, he was, he worked in Surprise, Arizona after that, in youth sports and with Arizona State Athletics. So, he's had, he had both, both things going for him. His first day with us in this position was September 10th, 2018. So, without further ado, I'll let them say hello to you. This is Joseph Hye.
Hi, I think I've met most of you, and, but I've been, I just, I'm new to the community, so it's been, been great moving here. I, through different events and everything like that, I've met, you know, pretty much every facet of the community, and each, each, each area that I meet has been welcoming. And for me, just as a person moving here, it's been a great transition. This was a brand-new community to me, but then, as a professional, it's also been great. There's, there's so much to build on in terms of whatever parks and on the rec side, and what's been invested on the past and what we can do in the future. And for me, my philosophy on kind of parks and rec as an industry or as a field is, you know, we work to, so that others can play, and I think that's true for, for both, both sides. And so, that's what I hope to accomplish and hope to build on. But otherwise, it's been a, it's been a great move so far for me. I'm excited for the future, and yeah, hopefully, keep building, so.
Thank you, Mark, for that introduction, and thank you for this opportunity, Council Members and Mayor. I just want to say that I'm proud to be employed by the city of Los Banos, and I look forward to a very long career serving all the citizens of this great city that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy and Joe, thank you so much, and welcome to Los Banos. And Billy, it's nice to see your students have the same hair color as the mayor, so. Okay, let's go on to, and thank you, Mark, very much. Okay, let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, and detailed guidelines are posted on the council, council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. If you have a cell phone, please place it on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and audience. My name is Mark Bodley. I live in Los Banos, and I am your appointed representative to the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District. I want to provide you with a brief report, an update on mosquito activity in and around our city. As reported in August, we have discovered a new species of mosquito called 80's Aegipti, which carries the Zika virus, dengue fever, and some other very serious diseases for humans. This mosquito was discovered in the northern part of Los Banos. No more detections of this mosquito have been made in the last two months. We continue to keep our surveillance for the species. We have one human case of West Nile virus in Los Banos, and two equine or horse cases here in the Los Banos area. In Merced County, we have had three cases of West Nile viruses so far this year, one in Merced, one in Winton, and the one case here in Los Banos. Regarding the 80's Aegipti species, they were found in two locations in Merced and the one location here in Los Banos. Those are the only two areas that we have found this, this species. The duck clubs are now being flooded, so that will provide more breeding areas for mosquitoes. So, until about mid-November or the first frost, we will be very active in spraying and other methods of mosquito control. We continue to try to serve the public of Merced County, and of course, in my main interest, the city of Los Banos. If you have any additional information, I can be reached at home and/or the mosquito district, our central office in Merced, which is 209-722-1527, or 800-622-3242. That's the brief report. Any questions I can hopefully help you with?
Mark, you said 722-1528?
1527.
1527.
Correct.
Okay, and 800-622?
3242.
3242. Okay. All right. Maybe we can place that on our public information and, and have that broadcast to make sure that anyone needs your services, that they know who to call and know to call right away.
Very good.
So, either number will get them there?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fariah.
Question, yeah, Mark, we still use mosquito fish in the troughs and lakes and things?
Yes.
Now, if someone has a trough or a pond or something, will they just call to get mosquito fish delivered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do have a, we have a breeding place at our Westside Depot on Tinkwell Road, and that we will deliver.
And can people pick them up as well, or do they have, you have to deliver them? Is it either way?
They can deliver them.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
It's easier for you, as a customer.
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right.
Mrs. Santos.
Hello, thank you for your report. I was wondering if, what's the, if someone wanted an area to be sprayed, what is the delay, or what's the amount of time it takes for you guys to come?
They'll normally do it the day before. If you're having an event, like a wedding reception, a birthday party, some, some large event in the backyard or wherever, you call them the day before the event, and they will try to spray the evening before. On occasion, they will do it the morning before.
So, within about the same day, then?
Right.
Thank you.
And if there's a pool, make sure we call. Don't treat it yourself. Just call Mosquito Abatement.
If you have, observe a pool that's neglected, that's green or whatever, please call the district, and they will come and treat it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Bodley invited me out for a tour recently of the, the outside of Los Banos facility. And the hangar is gigantic. I can't believe all the aircraft that they have. And, and so, it's not just, you would think that it's just a spray facility. There's a full lab there. And, and that lab, they have electron microscopes to, to, for detection. There are, there are individuals there who are biologists, who are trained. So, we're very fortunate to have such a nice facility within our area. And so, please tell the staff, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm Elaine Corey, and I'm from Los Banos, and I spoke at the last council meeting regarding some concerns that I had about the downtown redevelopment. After that, I met with Mr. Taraza and Stacy. The only answers I got with my concerns were they agreed to extend the deadline to the end of the month for surveys, and that any surveys not returned would be considered a no vote, and I'd like this information entered into the public record. And that's basically my complaint.
Thank you. We will be having a, a presentation by Director Elms, and at that time, all the factual information that's been garnered by the city on the, on the P-bid will then be revealed to the council, everyone else. And then, will we have a public forum portion of that, too? You're good.
So, we haven't discussed necessarily the details of the process at this point. We're just, we'll be gathering and reporting back to the council on, on the results of the survey, as I had promised back in September.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I just got the tap on the shoulder. You weren't fast enough, attorney. Bill, he got me first. Okay. So, so what we're going to do is, this is not a discussion item, because it's not agendized, but factual information on the P-bid will be given later on. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Here, let me reset here. All right.
Good evening. I'm Monica Solar, and I live here in Los Banos, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Stonefield Homes. We are here to show support for Measure H, and we would like to present a donation to... Did you hear me? Do I have to start over?
No, no, you're absolutely fine.
I'm good. Okay. We would like to present a donation to the volunteers of Say Yes to H in the amount of $15,000. So, I'm going to hand that over to you, along with this. Again, and Stonefield Home would like to show the support, and we say yes to H.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the council, thank you. Okay? Can we just hold for a minute, so we can get a...
There we go.
Can we go on? Three, two, and three. Thank, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to item seven, consideration of approval of agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, revoked on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 212-809 through 213031 in the amount of $969,430.46. Minutes for the October 3rd, 2018 City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6016, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2018-2019 model medium-duty flatbed utility truck to Sanus Ford in the amount of $132,079, and authorizing the Public Works Director-City Engineer to issue the purchase order. City Council Resolution Number 6017, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2018-2019 model heavy-duty combination sewer cleaner truck to Municipal Maintenance Equipment, Inc. in the amount of $443,814.62, and authorizing the Public Works Director-City Engineer to issue the purchase order. City Council Resolution Number 6018, accepting public improvements for Villages 4 Phase 2A and release of the Faithful Performance Bond and the Labor and Materials Bond, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to approve the, I'd like to approve the, oh, sorry, approve, make a motion to approve the agenda as stated by today.
Okay, consent, consent agenda.
Excuse me. Consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Salavara.
Second.
Okay, it's motioned by Johnson Santos, and it's second by Salavara for the approval of the consent agenda, all items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item number eight, consideration of entering into a professional services agreement to perform a police facility needs assessment. And we're going to go to Public Works Director Fagen.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's the next process on this very exciting project to build the new police station. So, tonight, we're going to ask the council to adopt Resolution Number 6016. So tonight, we're gonna ask the council to adopt Resolution Number 6019 that calls out to enter into a professional service agreement with Indigo Hammond and Playa Architects, and to perform the new police station facility needs assessment. And also, this allows the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement and not to exceed $166,400 for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Some of the background, and I think we all know the background, we definitely are in need, the police is definitely in need for a facility to, for their operations, and there's several reasons. The police department services have expanded, there's very definitely operational space challenges, they're located in three or four locations, and with the age of the facility, it's not very beneficial and doesn't, it's not, it's not operating correctly. There is a safety and security of police operations that's very important. Current facilities do not, do not even resemble what is currently required in police facilities for safety and security. And I said, it said, the current space is antiquated, and you do have capacity limits, and we do have the separate facilities. And we also, they're also in the police field, they say, and I'm taking this from Gary, vulnerability and exposure increases with multiple operational facilities. So this is trying to get all these facilities on the one roof, or at least in one parcel of land. So right now, we're on track to acquire land and design and construct a new police department facilities. A little discussion on what we're asking, what this entails is, first, we did solicit proposals for this work, and it's, the work will be in three phases, and I'll briefly summarize it. The first phase is to do a physical and operational evaluation of each of the police department's current locations. And they give, and it's, they were given in the staff report, it's the police department building at Fifth Street, the police annex building across the street on J, the Powell House building, which is also on J, and there's also a storage building, a residential house also on J. It's all located within walking distance, it's within block of this building right here. And of course, they're also gonna be looking at the animal shelter that's located at the airport. The second phase that they'll be looking at is a space needs analysis that evaluates the current and the future needs of the police department, and to life cycle that, and to see how that goes. And this will be analysis of the new facility and the animal shelter. And that will develop into a concept level evaluation of the best use of the facilities that we're proposing to do, and a very preliminary design of those facilities, and that will include the animal shelter. And the third phase would be a concept level evaluation of the best use of the existing facilities. What's the best use to use these facilities and these buildings? Now, one thing that was in the proposal, and there was several things, an environmental review of the existing facilities, structural review. We took that out of this contract because at this point, we think that's a step too far. So we'll just do a general analysis of the best use of the facility as, basically looking at the best use of the land. The buildings, we'll see what happens with them. There is a timeline for this process that we did. We did the public notice for the RFP on July 6, 2018. It was posted on the website and on the, in the enterprise, and 45 individual engineering architectural firms were personally sent invitations to the RFP. This is based off lists the police department gave us and lists that we asked other people who had experience with public safety facilities. And so we sent 45 individual engineering, to engineering architectural firms. In fact, the people that actually submitted bids were all from that individual invitations. We didn't get any general from just the advertisements. There was a mandatory site visit on July 18, 2018. It was mandatory because in order to give us a realistic scope of work, we thought they needed to see the existing facilities and the proposed facilities, which is located, which we hope will be located just west of the new courthouse. Then on August 19, 2018, eight firms provided proposals back to us, and those firms are listed in the staff report. I won't go over all eight of them, but we did have a five-person city panel that was comprised, I think, I think almost, I think every department was in that, in that committee. But we had a five-person panel, reviewed all eight proposals, and they got down to two proposals. It was, one was Indigo, and I'll just use the short name for them, it's Indigo, the one we're recommending tonight, and one was a company called VeNeer Construction Management, Incorporated. So we, these two individual firms went to personal interviews. So we had, we had five people there in those interviews, it was four or five, I don't recall, I think one was missing that day. And unanimously, it was agreed that we would work with Indigo to get a professional services agreement with them. It was a unanimous choice in our minds for what our needs were. So what you'll see in here is you'll see that we do have the agreement, it's in here, it has been reviewed by the city attorney, he will approve it to form. We also have the insurance certificate has been approved already by our insurance carrier. So that's already been approved. The steps are in here, and I can go over a few of them. Some of the things that will come out of this is, we will have visits to facilities to look at how they, how they work with our police department, look at several facilities. I think we have two days of scheduling to do that. One's up north in the Davis area, which is where Indigo has their office, and one will be, I believe, in the Clovis area. So we'll see what other people are doing and how that coincides with what we need. And several of them are pretty close to our size facility that we're looking at. We do have two separate community meetings scheduled, we have a presentation to city council, all this during the needs assessment study. We have this all that way. The study's approximately gonna be five months long, and the schedule is in the report. The fiscal impact of funds are, have been budgeted in the 2018-19 budget in account number 245-421-100-231, which I believe is a police capital improvement fund. I believe that, right? Yeah. So at this point, we'd like you to approve this so we can go forward, and this is a very, very big step for us, to let you know what's coming up in the future. On November 14, the general plan amendment and zone change will be going before the planning commission, and December 5, they'll be coming before the city council, including the environmental. That will initiate the owner of the property to start the remediation, that will initiate that. And then in about, I believe it's, I have it scheduled here, the next, we'll go through this assessment work, but in, for 2019, we will go out for a project managing RFP. Sorry, I'm reading a number here. We will go out with a project managing. Currently, we are the project managers, and we'll always be on top of it. Greg Pimentel is leading that effort with, he's doing a very good job of it. But we will bring in a private project manager because it's a very big job, as the schools do and as we did for the community center. We'll bring them in before we go out to a design architect or, of course, construction because we would like that project manager to help us review architects and, depending on what scheme we use to build this, there is possibility, there's several different ways of doing this, and we'll bring it up before council at that time. With a construction start date, we're still thinking that would be in the middle of 2021. That's what the goal is, to do that. Tonight, we do have the privilege of having, and I know I'm gonna mess up his name, but I'm sorry, Bruce is here, Bruce Playa, and what's good about this project and what is good about this firm, he is a principal of the firm, he's an architect, he's an architect, and he is the project manager. It's not, I'm just gonna hear from him when the invoices come in, which is, surprisingly happens a lot. And it's a good firm. In looking at the, one thing that was really good about this firm when we looked at the submission, they are dealing with a special group from the UC Davis area who deals directly in, this young lady deals directly in animal shelters and how to make them work, and because animal shelters nowadays have a lot to do with the people. The animals are taken care of very well, but it's how you address it, how people come in and see it, how they interact with the animals, that determines the success of adoptions. So we do have a very strong team, I think, for this needs assessment. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer, and like I said, Bruce is here, as is Greg. Greg's here also tonight, so any questions, we'd gladly try to answer for you.
Very exciting news. Council members, any questions at this point? Mr. Silveira?
No questions, and I'm glad that we're, you know, that we're bringing in professionals. And one of the things that, in looking into the firm that we are possibly gonna hire is, that I'm excited about is that you guys have done a wide range of products, projects. It's not just big projects, it's not just small projects, it's all kinds of projects in between, and so the only thing that I'm sad about is that it's just taken us this long to do it, and I'm not even gonna be on the council by the time we break ground on it. That's the only thing I'm sad about, so.
We'll invite you back.
I hope you do, Mayor, because it's been, it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about this for at least the last, that I know of seriously, the last probably three, four years, so it's nice to see that we're actually making some progress on it. So that's all I have, Mayor.
That's actually a short time in construction history.
I know.
All right, anyone else would like, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank our department heads and our police department, especially for thinking about the animal shelter, and also the idea of remodeling or perhaps rebuilding a new shelter so that we can have better interaction of the community coming in as they look at adopting animals. It's the way things are done now, and a lot of people look at their pets as, you know, part of their family, and you wanna make sure you have a good match with the pet that's being adopted out to the home to make sure that it's gonna be safe and have a good life. So thank you again to our staff and to everyone who participated in this evaluation process, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're gonna come up with. Thank you.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you, brief comment. I was looking at some of the designs they had done for other places in the agenda, and it looked, they looked very nice, so I could see why you definitely went with the...
And they're very nice, and they're eco-friendly, too.
Yeah.
Just to let you know. And we did, that was a very good point that Councilwoman Lewis brought up, we did actually eliminate a few firms based on, here's an L-860, 60-story building, it didn't really gonna fit with us, so, but thank you.
We don't have a ladder truck that high.
No.
Yeah, okay. Bruce came all this way, and Bruce, did you wanna make a couple of comments?
I sure do, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for having me here tonight. We're just looking forward to doing a bang-up job for you. We look at every little detail, we only leave the smallest stones unturned, and to get to the bottom of what's right for your community. And I think another aspect, you know, these are really all essential facilities for any community. Police services and animal shelters, as we've learned from fires and so forth, serve an emergency role in California. And we look at them that way, and we try to design resilient facilities for the long-haul, energy-efficient ones, yes, and in the case of the animal shelter, shelter for you that will embrace best veterinary medicine practices for shelters. So we're really looking forward to it, and Chief, we'll look forward to working with you and your crew and just do a bang-up job for you.
Well, we want to use another phrase for the police department other than bang-up job.
No bang-up job, good one. We wanna, we wanna have a building of excellence in services. Anyway, are there any questions I can answer for you tonight?
Any questions for Bruce? Well, thank you so much for coming tonight, and really appreciate this moving forward, and we're looking forward to an excellent design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion on City Council Resolution Number 6019? Mr. Faria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to move to accept and adopt City Council Resolution Number 6019, authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement for police facilities needs assessment with Indigo Hammond and Playa Architects, LLP, in the amount not to exceed $166,400 for fiscal year 2018-19.
Mr. Silveira?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Faria, second by Silveira, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6019. This calls for a roll call vote. This is a good one.
Faria?
Yes.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much, everyone, for all your work. Let's go on to Item 9, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 9A, public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend and reorganize Article 20, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to the off-street parking, and amend and reorganize Article 32, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to recreational vehicles. And Item 9A1, Ordinance Number 1065, amending and reorganizing Article 20, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to the off-street parking, amending and reorganizing Article 32, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to recreational vehicles. This is the first reading and introduction. So we are gonna go to Community and Economic Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a PowerPoint presentation for this item. Please.
Okay. Laptop. There.
So just to highlight some of the background on this particular topic, back in February of this year, the city council directed staff to review our Los Banos Municipal Code as it relates to driveway hardscape lot coverage limitations and the vehicle parking on residential properties, including backyards. So staff reported back in March of 2018, and the city council directed staff to move forward with an ordinance to address four items. First was excessive number of vehicles parking on single-family residential properties, vehicles parked on non-hardscape surfaces, using sidewalks and curb returns to access back and side yards, and also the issue of hardscaping of substantial percentage of front yards for vehicle parking. The planning commission held a public hearing on September 12, as well as September 26, and recommended approval of the ordinance proposed to you tonight on September 26. So I want to lay a bit of foundation of what we currently have in our municipal code now. So the applicable sections that we currently have now, we do have ordinances that prohibit front yard parking on lawns, landscaped areas, and unpaved surfaces, and also prohibits the parking of more than three vehicles in a backyard. We currently have an ordinance that allows recreational vehicle parking within a side or rear yard with setback limitations, or one recreation vehicle in a front yard driveway or other paved surface, which it cannot exceed 50% of the front yard. We also have another ordinance that requires a minimum of 30% landscaping, and this is for lawns and outdoor areas, and the total lot area with a maximum of 70% buildings, including parking areas and driveways of the total lot area. So what that means is that our current zoning code only requires 30% of open space, but that's taking the whole lot into consideration. And as you can remember, as you can recall, back in March, we had some discussion of how staff was going to be proposing a new ordinance that would provide some solutions and solve that issue. And we currently do have an ordinance that, it says that it's a nuisance to park any vehicle on any setback or any unimproved surface or on any improved surface which has not been previously approved for parking purposes. But we've gone through these existing ordinances, we've reorganized where they are in the code. So what we're proposing for you tonight is a reorganization. There's sections that refer to off-street parking in the public safety code, as well as the different sections of the zoning code, and we are proposing to organize this all-in-one section in its own article that will now refer to off-street parking in residential areas. So the purpose of the ordinance before you tonight is ensure that the onsite parking and storage of vehicles, one, does not create a public safety or... and storage of vehicles, one, does not create a public safety or public nuisance issue, two, that it does not create an adverse aesthetic from street right-ofways or adjacent neighboring properties, and then last, that it does not create an adverse impact to adjacent parcels with the surrounding neighborhoods. So, the proposed ordinance for you, I've tried to break it down into bite-sized pieces for you. So, first what we did was we created definitions for paved driveways, paved driveway extensions and improved parking areas. Essentially, the framework of this ordinance, you cannot park any vehicle or any recreational vehicle unless it's on a paved driveway, which a paved driveway means this is the direct access to a garage or a carport from a street with a city-approved driveway approach or curb-cut access. So, no longer would that approved driveway be considered anything that does not have a driveway approach, so it needs the driveway with the apron. Also, a paved driveway extension, we've defined what that is. This is the area of the front yard that's adjacent to the public right-ofway and between the paved driveway and its nearest side property line. And the next slide, I'm gonna give you an example of what that means. And then also an improved parking area. So, we refer to improved parking areas, and this is with a city-approved driveway approach or curb-cut access. So, this is a typical lot, this is what we typically see just on a, a regular plot plan. This is a, it's over six thousand square feet, so sixty-three hundred, almost sixty-four hundred square foot lot, but it's very typical of what we see in, and so I wanted to provide an exhibit for you of what we typically see. So, we have a garage with a twenty-foot setback, we have the five-side yard setback, so it's a five-foot side yard setback. So, when we're referring to a paved driveway, that would be in this green area, and on this plot plan, what's highlighted for you is, is what would be the approved driveway. When we refer to the paved driveway extension, it's the area in yellow. So, a paved driveway extension would only apply to that right, to that property line that's the closest to the driveway. It does not refer to the opposite end of the lot. And then the key to that is an improved parking area, the key to that is that it has to have a driveway approach. It would not qualify to be an improved parkway area, parking area, if it does not have that approach. This is just an example, I wanted to break down for you, there could be a possibility on a corner lot that you could have rear yard parking, but essentially, the way that this code, that this proposed ordinance is set up, you would need that driveway approach to be able to park any vehicle, so to access your yard, you have to have that driveway approach. So, on your typical yard, you'd only have the access in front of your driveway, or if you have a corner lot where that green arrow is up on the top of the page, you could potentially have access to the rear yard if you had a corner lot. On a typical standard interior lot, because you're gonna now need a driveway approach, you're not gonna be allowed to just drive up over the sidewalk, you're probably not going to be able to park legally now a vehicle on that side yard, because we have a standard and specification that requires, and that's already existing, it's, it's been a policy of ours for probably more than twenty years, that requires no more than fifty percent of your frontage can be a driveway. So, on your typical standard lot, you wouldn't be able to have two driveways, therefore, you wouldn't be able to use that far side yard on the opposite end of your driveway. And really, you would only be able to use on a corner lot that rear yard, but you'd need an approach, and that's what circled for you. That would only be an example that would work if you actually applied for an encroachment permit, received that encroachment permit and put that driveway in. Sure.
So, Stacy, on the previous, the green highlighted area, I know, I don't know if it happens anywhere, what if it's right in the center? And you say you're closest to which property line? What if your driveway's right in the center? Can you pick which side you wanna go to?
So, it typically doesn't, does not occur that way, this is, I mean, your standard lot, there are unique situations where, say, you have a corner lot, for instance, that the home may face the, the, the actual corner. In that type of instance where the driveway's in the center, we would go by what is the closest to the property line. There's going to be a closer into the property line, the garage is going to be closer to, to one of the property lines, and that's the driveway extension side that we would go by.
Okay, thank you.
Also, it does give the, the Community and Economic Development Director, when it comes to a zoning verification, so when somebody asks, and that's coming up, I'm getting ahead of myself, but there's gonna be a zoning verification requested, and it does give the director the ability to make some of those minor decisions.
I, I think Stacy probably answered it, and I just wanted to clarify from my understanding, on the rear of the lot, at the top portion up here, right here, oh, that doesn't work, but at, at the top right corner.
Uh huh.
If there's enough room for that vehicle, a recreational vehicle to be parked back there, then the resident would have to come to the city for an encroachment permit and then pay for the curb cut.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the proposed ordinance requires a zoning clearance certificate, and we also required that, and it's, now it, it, it's becoming our process to just ask for zoning clearance certificates. We saw that in the accessory structures and buildings ordinance, where you wouldn't have needed necessarily a permit to put up a small shed, and in this instance, and, and applicable to this new ordinance, you wouldn't have needed a permit in, in the past to pour concrete, but now with these limitations on how much you can cover your yard, we are asking for just a free zoning clearance certificate, and this is so that we can ensure that you're following the requirements of the code as a property owner, and then you as a property owner, it ensures that your investment is legal, that you're not investing in concrete that code enforcement is gonna come and cite you on. So, it's, it's a bit of insurance for both sides. It's free, it's to be educational, and it's to allow staff to just be able to see a picture what you want to do, what your plan is for your property, and to determine whether that meets the criteria of our zoning code. With the new ordinance, we're proposing to require encroachment permit if utilizing access other than an existing driveway approach or curb cut. So, to answer Councilmember Lewis's question, yes, it now would require an encroachment permit if you are utilizing any part of your property other than your existing driveway, and that's for vehicle parking or storage. It also prohibits parking on unpaved surfaces, which our policies already, our, our ordinances already did that before, but we are now defining what a paved surface is. And the use of handicap sidewalk curb, ramp or return or landing is strictly prohibited. They have a picture of that. So, this technically would have been and is prohibited, however, the code doesn't expressly state that. Now, this ordinance expressly prohibits using the ADA ramp on a curb to access your own private residence. So, as you can see in this particular property, it's a corner lot, they have a masonry wall, so they can't utilize that side lot line, but they are utilizing the ADA ramp to access their property. This would be illegal, it, you can't get an encroachment permit for this, you're utilizing the ADA ramp incorrectly, it's not meant for vehicles, it's not wide enough for vehicles, and it causes damage to the public right-ofway. So, moving on. The proposed ordinance allows the use of existing gravel driveways as a non-conforming use, subject to restrictions. And this provision, this grandfathering essentially what's created for parking on a gravel driveway in existence, and the, and the code goes to explain what that exception is, and it would have to be in existence on January first, two thousand and nineteen, and the purpose of that date was just the city attorney and I discussing, okay, when we thought that this ordinance would potentially be in effect and setting a date of when, when it would be in effect. This exception technically only really applies to those areas in town, those existing areas in town which have a driveway approach, but they do not have a concrete driveway. We do have some older areas in town, mostly around City Hall, some of them are in the state's areas that were built prior to the nineteen sixties or in the nineteen sixties when they, when the dam was built in that era, that were built very quickly without a concrete driveway. So, it would be creating an exception for those properties, but then there's a further, it further defines that if those properties are redeveloped more than fifty percent of the value of that property, they must be brought up to standard, so they would be required to put in a concrete driveway, or if they change their use to a non-residential use. So, in the downtown area where they have a mixed-use zoning and commercial and residential are both, are uses that are permitted in that district, and they converted that home to, say, a professional office, they'd have to then actually apply with the, the current standards, so they would need to comply with our standards if they want to change their use.
Stacy, how does that apply to someone who has a concrete driveway and then put gravel next to it?
Next to it, they would not be allowed.
Okay.
So, if you were trying to extend your driveway, you were doing an extension, you'd have to meet the definition of the code, and the code states gravel is not under that definition, it has to be concrete cement, asphalt, blacktop, bricks, interlocking pavers or all, or other all-weather impermeable material, which gravel would not be considered to be impermeable.
So, you're talking about with a gravel driveway, someone who has one gravel driveway?
And it's in existence now.
One gravel driveway?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if people wanted to put gravel other than that and, and then park more cars on the front of their house, that wouldn't be allowed?
It wouldn't be allowed, they would need an, an approach, so they would need an encroachment permit to be able to do that, we wouldn't give one unless it met our standards, and they would have to show that they're going to pave or it's going to be concrete, and on a interior lot, typically, they're not going to be able to meet the coverage requirements.
Okay.
It's just, it's pretty much unfeasible.
Okay.
So, the proposed ordinance restricts parking can only occur on a paved driveway, paved driveway extension or improved parking area, and it limits permissible front yard parking to a maximum of fifty percent of the front yard. So, an example of that, this picture, and it's a bit difficult to see, but beyond that van, so we're looking, that's a corner lot, and those vehicles that are facing away, so what we see, the back of the vehicles right now, that white car in particular, it's on concrete, but what that residence had done was they've paved with concrete their entire front yard and their side yard, because it's a corner lot. With this ordinance, with the proposed ordinance, the driveway would be the only place where they could park their car, where that white car is parked, that would be illegal once this, if this ordinance becomes effective. So, the proposed ordinance allows parking in side yards that meet one of the definitions of permissible parking, and back to those definitions, it's three definitions, so it's per paved parking area, it is a paved driveway, paved driveway extension or an improved parking area. So, it's only those three ways as, as how you can park a vehicle. It allows parking in backyards, that mean one of the definitions of the permissible parking, so it has to be on an improved surface, and it limits the number of vehicles allowed to be parked in a backyard to three. And that's just, that's what the code had existing before, it was in the Public Safety Code, it was a, an ordinance that was actually created by one of our past fire chiefs when code enforcement was within the fire department, and it also limits the height of those vehicles to twelve feet, six inches, which was also consistent already with the existing ordinances.
What about the storage of, of, if you have three vehicles back there and the storage of gasoline in, in these cars, and they're almost next to a house, and the fire department, I know it says three feet away, but doesn't that create kind of a liability and a person for, for exiting windows or whatever?
So, we do have setbacks built in, a three-foot setback is what is proposed from, from the home and any exits, exitable with ingress and egress to humans, and I know our fire chief can jump in, but in our discussions, the garage also contains vehicles that is connected to a home with, with combustibles within it as well, sheds are as well with, with lawn mowers and fuel tanks as well, and, and Fire Chief, if you have anything else to add to that?
Well, I think the big issue is blocking of access or egress from, from the area to the, around the property, any, there can be an excessive amount of anything that could cause additional problem. The, there are vehicles, there are fuel, there are combustible materials inside the garages, and they're, and they're designed and built in order to have fire protection within them and fire breaks, that type of thing, but I, I would have concern with any excessive amount of fuel storage on, on any property that would need to be just addressed on an individual basis.
So, if someone were to park three cars in their backyard, is that something that you would like to inspect because of, of, or the proximity to the house or whatever? I'm just trying to make it as safe for the residents as possible.
I think if we had, if we had a concern and, and there was a valid complaint or a question in regards to their property or their neighboring property, I feel that we would want to take a look at it and evaluate the individual incident.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I would like to kind of jump in on that particular one, and, and I realize that, you know, people have sheds in their backyard, they may have lawn mowers in there, which is a containment, garages have firewalls, as the chief has stated, so there's that protection between the home and the vehicles that are in there, not to say that they're, they can't catch on fire, because we've had that happen in our community. But my concern is with three vehicles parked in a backyard is not so much the combustible to the house of the owner who has those vehicles, because most houses that are in our community now are stucco, so there's gonna be a little bit of time before fire gets through that stucco to the home, but you've got all these wood fences that are in our communities, and currently, you know, it looks like there's a three-foot setback, which was originally a five-foot setback, has been changed, I'd like to see that go back to the five-foot as it was originally, which means that even if you have pavement back there, it, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be pavement all, all the way to the fence, and just from my walking around neighborhoods, and in my neighborhoods, some of the older homes that have these large backyards have vehicles parked back there, the grass is dead, the fences are old, dried out, and it's, it's a fire waiting to happen with these vehicles back there. So, I, I have issue with vehicles being parked in the backyard. One of the things that I, I would like to recommend is that, other than RVs, because we've already established an RV where it can be parked, whether it's in the driveway or in a side yard, that we move, you know, I, I prefer personally not to have any vehicles in the backyard that can be driven back there, but I, I would be in favor of at least having one other vehicle back there, but to limit the height, take it from the twelve-foot down to five feet, because the fences that have been indicated in this project are all six-foot fences, and if I'm living in a neighborhood and I wanna have an event in my backyard or invite family over for a barbecue, I don't wanna see three vehicles that are twelve-foot high sticking over a six-foot fence. And we were talking about in the... And we were talking about in the purpose of this application, uh talking about aesthetics from the street, talking about aesthetics from neighboring properties and creating nuisance and um uh adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood neighbors. So to me, this is definitely an adverse effect on surrounding neighbors by allowing three vehicles that are twelve uh twelve feet plus high in a backyard and also giving uh our Public Works Director an exception when there may be a hardship to take it up to fifteen feet. So that, you know, it's like having a two-story house in your backyard and I I just don't see that as being pleasant and aesthetic. And I don't think people purchase homes to be able to sit there and look at vehicles this large day in and day out in their backyard. So that's one thing that I would like to propose on uh in section uh nine, three, twenty twenty uh in regards to B and C is to take that twelve foot vehicle down to five feet and to at a minimum uh re restricted to one vehicle in the backyard, which could be a motorcycle or our, you know, uh uh watercraft of some sort, so that your neighbors don't have to see what's back there. Um and also, you haven't gotten to it, Stacy yet, but I'm gonna state it on section nine dash three point twenty twenty four. Um for those setbacks, uh three foot existing on um the building for human habitation and also uh from the rear fence, which is three feet. I believe in the original ordinance, it was five feet. I would like to see that moved back to five feet from three feet. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Also with the proposed ordinance, uh it does allow the Community Economic Development Director to approve minor adjustments. Um and that's also consistent with what we've been proposing in um some of our uh recent ordinances. So it would allow a minor adjustment um with the following exceptions um from site standards. For lot coverage, it would be up to fifteen percent increase of the allowable front yard. For height would be up to fifteen feet in height. And for the number of vehicles, up to a maximum of two additional motorcycles, small watercraft or other similar equipment stored in a residential backyard. So that would be in addition to the three that um is being proposed within the ordinance. It does though-
I'm sorry, can you press your button?
On the fifteen feet, which would be determined by you, is that as it was sort of for hardships? Is that something that would have like a time limit on it or is it just um kind of at your discretion?
Um it would determine, it would be based on what is the situation. So if it's um, you know, a a certain type of RV or recreational vehicle and it's above the twelve feet, six inches, um and there's a hardship that they've had it for the last, you know, fifteen years and um, you know, there there would need to be some serious circumstances to be able to qualify for that hardship to begin with. And then it's not just automatically granted and it doesn't with the the way that we've written the code, there are checks and balances so that the neighborhood is also advised that that hardship is being given. Um so when the director approves a minor adjustment, the property owners existing at the time located within three hundred feet shall be notified of the decision. And then they're given the ability to appeal if they don't agree with that decision. Um we felt that that was reasonable and that it didn't um give the director uh more power without any checks and balances with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did did you say something um other than the three vehicles parked in the backyard, there there were other additional vehicles that could be uh back there or were?
Yes, so under section twenty twenty seven, minor adjustments. One, number three, the number of vehicles a hardship could be given, but it's up to a maximum of two. And it's specific to what additional vehicles those could be. It's only applies to motorcycles, small watercraft or other similar equipment. So they'd have to be small equipment to qualify. And the the purposes of that with the my discussions with the city attorney is that um so say I have an RV and then I have, my husband and I both have motorcycles. Um but then we also have a jet ski. That is for uh vehicles as according to the definitions of this code. And um you know, my jet ski is is minor in nature. Can I qualify for a hardship for that? Um and so we had felt that that was reasonable, that there would be circumstances out there where somebody could apply for a hardship and be granted on a minor basis.
So then what I'm hearing is outside of the RV, which could possibly be parked on a, you know, if the lot is large enough on the side. As it stands right now, there could be three additional vehicles in the backyard that could be twelve feet, six inches, including two additional vehicles uh which you've just described, which brings that to basically six, as I understand it, vehicles in the backyard.
If they apply for a hardship and but those that hardship does apply to specific types.
Right. The point point that I'm getting to is six vehicles in the backyard and three of them being twelve feet, six inches.
Potentially.
Yes, okay. So then with that in mind, um I would probably propose that we eliminate the three vehicles in the backyard because you've you've got the one RV that could possibly be back there. And with the hardship, we're looking at two other additional vehicles in the backyard. I I think I I don't know how anybody can stuff that much stuff in their backyard unless they've got a awfully big lot. But that that just seems overwhelming to me. I I wouldn't want to live next door to anybody that had that much stuff in their backyard. So, okay, I'm sorry.
And for clarification, so they would have to, those vehicles in the rear yard would have to be on an improved surface. That improved surface, it'd have to be calculated, they'd have to meet the percentage requirements, they'd have to have a driveway approach. It isn't, not everyone would qualify to be able, it it's not going to be feasible for most typical lots.
Right.
Um for rear yard parking, that's really only going to qualify for a corner lot. There's going to be quite a bit of improvement to even be able to access that corner lot, that side, that rear side yard. Um so it's 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 a pretty unique circumstance that that would even be potentially possible.
And and again, I understand that the lot would have to be large enough to accommodate all of that. But I'm gonna, I'm still going to take counsel back and hope they consider uh section nine dash three point twenty fourteen, which is the purpose of this application and the three things that are stated. And those three things, as far as aesthetics of the neighborhood and what it presents, just these these things totally overwhelm what we're trying to create here for our community. So I just want us to keep that in mind. I mean, this is, it's a lot of vehicles potentially that can be in any one person's backyard depending on the lot size.
Stacy, may I ask? What 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 kind of lot that you kind of briefly described, but I'm not getting a picture of what kind of lot would would qualify for that type of uh uh that type of access. And it seems like most houses, they have a side yard that's only about five feet wide.
Yeah, that's that's your typical, what's going to be associated with your approved driveway. Um you know, the the next slide is a picture of, this is your typical front yard. Um they do have garbage cans, uh so our police chief. Um so to overlook those garbage cans out in the public right away or out in the view from the public right away. But this would be an example of where this is a typical side yard setback. They have a driveway extension on the side. But as you can see, it's it's five feet. They're typically between five and ten feet. Ten feet is a large side that would be able to access um that side yard. But with our setback requirements of three feet from the home and then as it's being proposed here, three feet from the property line, that's six feet even on, say, a a slightly larger side yard setbacks. So say it's ten feet. You only have four feet for, you know, it's not your typical vehicle is not going to be four feet wide or a recreational vehicle is going to be four feet wide. Um so-
The the reason for the five and five is so the fire truck can get through there, right?
No, there's a five foot, five and five is it's not for a fire truck, it's based on the fire rating, isn't it, Fire Chief? The spaces.
I mean, but if you had to drive a fire, because the fire truck, I was always understood that they had and they could drive the fire truck in between those buildings.
I don't believe you can.
Now, we wouldn't be able to drive a any equipment back there, but we do need to get our our personnel and our equipment, our firefighting equipment, not necessarily the vehicles, but and the tools and and have space to do the work. And and also protection of the neighboring properties and and defenses like you're talking about.
Okay, so with a typical house like this, would someone be able to park vehicles in the back?
It would be vi- not on this picture where we have out in front of us right now, no. As you can see where the the garbage cans are not very wide and they take a a big majority of that side yard. So no, on a typical interior lot, it would be pretty difficult. You'd need unique situations, which we do have older neighborhoods with larger lots. But the majority of our lots, the majority of our residential lots were built after nineteen eighty nine and are all very standard with reversing flip-flopping driveways with five yard setbacks next to the driveways. And the driveways, the approved driveway with direct access to the garage is now the only place where you're going to be able to park and access your rear yard and an interior lot.
Because if they parked an RV on the side, that's one thing, you have two houses abutting it. But but what worries me is that if someone with a six foot fence had to look at a twelve foot high RV with the windows, then would be protruding out and if some, no privacy for the neighbors. And 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 that isn't a very pleasant looking looking thing. And then if they could park more than one RV there with a height of of twelve feet, uh I I don't know. I I just, it 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 bothers me that we're that, you know, people wouldn't like that kind of 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 backdrop in their na- in their in their backyard. Because those cars are not, I mean, they're they're not six feet high.
So this is the existing, so all we are is reorganizing the ordinance. This is the existing ordinance as it refers to uh rear yard parking of recreational vehicles or even of rear yard parking of vehicles in general. What the Planning Commission did recommend is on twenty twenty, um as Councilmember Lewis stated, it would be on um the, excuse me, not on twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty four, storage and parking. So nine dash three point twenty twenty four, which is on page five of the proposed ordinance C. It reduces um the side and rear yard setback to three feet. Where it was originally five feet. Otherwise, the code currently allows for side yard parking of recreational vehicles as long as it meets the setback requirements.
I think we have a chance to clean up some things and uh well, I'll let other people talk. Mr. Silveira?
Stacy, the twelve foot, six inches, is that like an RV industry standard? Is that where we come up with that number?
That's exactly where that came from. It's the industry standard, the average um recreational vehicle is that height and that's already existing in the code and it just is being carried over in this proposed ordinance.
So would they need a separate access to park an RV back there?
In a s- in a corner lot, yes, they would. They would have to have their own driveway approach unless they can use the approach from their driveway in their front yard to access that side yard, which is not your typical lot. And that's that, you know, that was the discussion we were just talking about, well, can you really access that side yard? Well, typically not, because your driveway, you're probably only going to have a five foot setback on that side yard.
So do we have any idea, I know this is a tough question, but you know, who would qualify to park an RV in the back?
I can tell you one.
Corner lots and-
But we'd have to have a separate access.
In presidential, I can take you to one right now where it's probably either the biggest or the second biggest lot in town where their driveway lines up with their side yard.
But it's a big lot.
It's a huge lot. And that's where all this is coming is that we're talking with the three RVs and the extension for the motorcycles and the and the jet skis. You there's there's and I would venture to say, and I may be wrong, but ninety percent of the lots in Las Manas would not be able to fit any of that in there.
You're absolutely right. When you look at our housing stock-
And you're looking, and the ten percent that could is is our is old stuff that have bigger lots. Your standard lots in any subdivision that's been built in the last fifteen years with maybe a rare exception of a true corner lot that they couldn't do anything, it couldn't make two out of it, so they made one a little bit bigger. And and so I I'm I'm curious to finish listening to your presentation, Stacy, but again, I remember when this subject came up and the all these things are already dressed in our current code, with the exception of the of the minor changes of allowing for the the Community Economic Development Director to have some minor adjustment power and that Planning Commission just said that they would like to see it go from five to three. And again, I will state what I stated before is that these are all code enforcement issues that we just don't have a code enforcement staff to keep up on. That's what it is. And then when we want to talk about dead grass in your backyard, that's a weed abatement issue, right, Chief? I mean, where we we could, those folks can be cited for for weed abatement issues. So again, I just think, and and I know I've I've said this stuff before, but we're going, we want to change an ordinance to make it stiffer, if you will, to restrict people's property rights even more than than, you know, currently happens. But yet we don't have a code enforcement staff big enough to keep up with the stuff that we already have on the books. So that's just kind of my thoughts for now.
Yeah, well, then we shouldn't do anything if we're not gonna enforce it. So um I I I guess, I I guess, I I I'm just trying to understand what kind of a I don't want to use the word liability, but I want to I want to use the the word that what kind of wha- wha- what kind of a what's the proper word? How much is this encompassing of Las Manas? I mean, is that a true statement with Mr. Silveira said that only maybe ten percent of the lots can qualify for this?
I mean, in in reality, the majority of our housing stock is post nineteen eighty nine. So after our big housing boom in the late eighties, did we see, that's the majority of the housing stock that we have in existence, which in those subdivisions, it's very cookie cutter and they're flip-flop with the garages. So we do have certain exceptions with bigger lots that that would be in the presidential area and the older areas of town, which are in the state's area.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. I that 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 isn't-
At the eleven thousand units that we have of, you know, single-family residential, we would not, you know, it it it's it's a very minor amount would even qualify um to be able to access an interior lot, like what we see in front of us was your typical lot. Um and this was just taken on Cardoza Road, you know, that's your typical lot. It's probably, but that's house itself is probably about twenty years old. But you wouldn't be able to access that side yard. And so this is the typical story. This is actually a corner lot. And they could access from the rear, uh which I apologize that this photo doesn't show you that corner. But they would need a driveway approach. They would need to meet all the requirements to even be able to access that side rear yard.
Okay, so so some of these places currently that there's five feet from the property line and then another five feet for the neighbor. They can't utilize the neighbor's five feet?
Oh, absolutely not. That that would be trespassing.
Okay, because because like I, what I've seen is some driveways that have have been, and that's why they're parking these vehicles in the back because they've created a driveway with the two houses.
No, that would be illegal. And we would never condone one neighbor using another neighbor's private property to access their property.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to get my hands around what kind, what we're allowing, that's all. Whether it's allowed now or not, I'm just trying, I'm just trying, because because when this thing, it when this is passed, you know, we're gonna have some people that that have parked RVs in the back that shouldn't have parked them there.
But they shouldn't have parked them there already, because it's already in the code-
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at. I I I I'm getting at, but but it it I just want to make sure it's clearly defined as as to what you can use. And then the encroachment permit for a corner lot where they have to pour a separate driveway. And that's only allowed if they'd have to come to us for that, right?
They would. So and and to clarify on the on that point, so currently, right now, we do have ordinances that prohibit where these vehicles can be parked, what those setbacks can be. But it is not clearly defined. So that is the intent of this ordinance. We are trying to clean that up. Define where you can, make it very clear where you can park. Um and it will eliminate where folks are already, it's el- Um, and it will eliminate where folks are already, it's illegal, but that will be completely infeasible to meet the requirements of this ordinance. So it, they will be, it'll need to be removed.
Okay. Okay, I'm I'm sorry, any more questions? Oh, Mr. Freya.
Yeah, I I think one of the challenges you have is we're trying to write a code, trying to write codes for a standardized code when the lots in the city vary quite greatly. Another thing is are people who have had their RVs parked in their backyard, some of them five, ten years? Are we, are we going to go cite them now? Do we have the resources to cite them? I agree that, you know, twelve-feet-six inches sticking up in the back backyard in many situations, you know, it's it's obnoxious to the neighbor. Some neighborhoods, they have the space or doesn't. And so I think we're we're trying to negotiate, navigate this labyrinth of of rules, trying to, you know, codify standardized rules for lots that are very different in size and design. And it 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 feels rather, and add to the fact that we we don't have the code enforcement to enforce it, even though we're writing the law. So um, I'm hap- you know, those are just my comments. I I think we're 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 trying to work in in, it's almost like a constantly moving target. And so I I don't have any answers, um, except that we need code enforcement to to deal with the problem, we just don't have code enforcement to forces. So those are my comments. That's all I had to say on that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
So that's essentially the end of the presentation. Um, I, what I had highlighted in this presentation is what is new, what is being proposed in the ordinance. I really didn't get into what was just being reorganized from other sections of the code, which are existing policies, which I highlighted as our foundation at the beginning of this presentation. But the planning commission, as previously stated, they did make a recommendation to change the recreational vehicle parking on the side and rear yard from five feet to three feet. But that was the only change on the existing ordinances and policies that we currently have in place. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council open the public hearing, receive public comment, waive the first reading, and introduce ordinance number ten sixty-five by title. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, um, council, let me uh, sure. Okay, yeah, I was going to ask, can you wait for comments after, okay? All right. All right, let's open up the public hearing on ordinance number one zero six five. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. Um, I actually am more for the ordinance than it sounds like a few here. Um, I I think my uh, my opinion is more towards Scott's where how much we can regulate someone is is going to cause more of an issue than not. Um, I I guess for RV parking, uh, if we were saying to, if there was the decision of the council to eliminate the fact that you can park an RV in your in the backyard, they'd have to park it at a storage facility or something along those lines, because they couldn't keep it on the street, is that correct?
Yes, they wouldn't be able to keep it on the street, so it'd either need to be in their front yard driveway or in a storage facility.
Um, well, I'd have to say that, yes, with the houses that we have as of right now, the the sizes, there's no way that most houses, and I think at some point it'll become an issue, the fact that you have an RV in your front yard, I mean, on your front driveway. So um, I would almost, I mean, I would almost be for being able to park at least the one RV and the rest of the vehicles being under the standard. Uh, but I I'm I'm not, I'm against telling someone that they can't necessarily, and I understand the fact that it's unsightly to neighbors and whatnot. But just the fact that they moved into our town because of the areas like the Bay or of cities like the Bay and area cities, they restricted things that they could do, they didn't have yards, they didn't have this, so they could do these extra things. So I'd hate for them to come over here and be like, you can't do that as well. So that's where my, a bit of my dilemma is. Um, I think that, yes, it does, um, the new code or the updating of the code does help um, with every situation, I like the fact that you can, you can, you can approve uh, exceptions on the rules as well. And I just wanted to clarify just to make sure. Um, so that the one car that was parked with an entrance entrance to the um, ADA driveway, is that something that they would have to break up or?
Um, with this ordinance, we're not proposing that um, residents have to remove that concrete, they just can't park on it or access it. So um, and that was because in in there's existing circumstances where folks have put in a lot of investment, uh, but they won't be able to utilize it for parking purposes.
Um, and one last thing, and I probably should have asked you this earlier. The encroachment uh, cost is is that, what's the price of that or does it depend on the size you wanted or?
It does depend, a standard typical seventy dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, to get that paved?
Uh, to get just the permit. And then it would be the responsibility of the homeowner to get a contractor, there's certain requirements, not just any contractor can work within our right of way. They have to be bonded, they have to have a construction license. And so um, and the liability is on the homeowner.
I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, I'm going to make reference to uh, the purpose of this ordinance, and that's to aesthetically keep our neighborhoods pleasant. I'm not in favor of twelve-foot, uh, six-inch vehicles, uh, three parked in the, in anyone's backyard. Um, I think the RV is the exception. Uh, if someone has a a large enough side yard and they don't want to put it in their driveway, that they can um, you know, take advantage of that opportunity to do that with the encroachment per- permit. I think this ordinance is probably geared more around typically what our neighborhoods have been built post-eighty-nine versus what's in the older districts uh, in Los Manos. Those are the exceptions, and I don't think this ordinance is, I would hope that it's not being built around that particular purpose. I'd also like to ma- recommend to uh, this council that, under that section twenty twenty-four, that the three-foot setback, they change back to the original five-foot, which was in the ordinance. It's it's reasonable to have a, you know, a five-foot setback between um, the setback is already there between the houses and not to shorten that for purposes of trying to get a vehicle through there. Uh, I I just don't know how that's going to work. So I I think the five-foot uh, setback on the um, uh, the, what is it, uh, number uh, nine-dash-three-point twenty-four twenty under C, uh, it's the last sentence where it says three-foot setback, uh, any abut- abutting side yard was originally five feet. I would like to see that changed back to, I mean, it's three feet, but I'd like to see that changed back to the five feet. Again, I um, because uh, it's in the ordinance as it's being proposed to give um, our uh, uh, staff direction to make adjustments based on hardship and and those hardships would have to be evaluated and acted upon. I just think that three vehicles, and I'm only looking at the post-eighty-nine construction here in town. I'm not considering any of these lots that are oversized and humongous. Um, that three vehicles of twelve-feet-six inches is a lot to put in someone's backyard. So um, I would like, I would like the council to consider reducing that from three down to one vehicle. And those those are my two proposals on this. Is uh, number C under nine-dash-three-point twenty twenty uh, to change that from three vehicles to one. And again, on uh, nine-dash-three-point twenty twenty-four, on the last sentence, to change that from three feet to five feet, back to five feet as originally stated in the ordinance.
Mr. Freya?
I I agree with the three vehicles to one. Well, I think one, one RV in the backyard is is plenty. I don't have a problem with the stuff, I I don't have too big a problem with stuff that can't be seen from outside of the yard. But uh, I think one, one RV, full-size RV uh, in anyone's backyard, I think is enough. And I would support that change. Uh, setbacks don't don't bother me too much uh, as much. If if that's a breaker, make or break issue, then that's fine, uh, either way with me. But I do like the idea of limiting the recreational vehicle, the the big ones, to one uh, in a yard.
Mrs. Santos? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Silveira, you're in it. Wait a minute, no, it was Mrs. Santos, I'm sorry. Let me go back here and take care of that. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. Um, yes, I agree with limiting recreational vehicles to one, but also there's uh, motorcycles, there's the boats, motorboat, boats that people might have as well. So um, I and so I I definitely understand limiting the larger vehicles and and, but I I would have to say I can't. If someone has like a motorcycle or something else that's smaller and boats and whatnot that they're keeping in the backyard, individuals, I I'd have to say that I I'm okay with that personally, but I understand it's at the discretion of the council. But I'm still okay with the three, as long as it's limiting the amount of recreational, um, large RVs that you can have in the backyard. And the setbacks, um, I'm, I think three is okay, but I'm, it's just me, so, thank you.
Mrs. Silveira?
Chief, are you good with the three?
I'm okay with the three as long as the access in the in the in the egress is is maintained. Um, I know back when the, when we did this uh, RV ordinance in the past, when uh, we were doing the code enforcement, that was one of the main main issues, because you put a vehicle back there and you have zero space between the house and the RV or zero space between the fence. So I'm okay with that if it can be enforced and it's and is is being taken care of. And you have the egress and we have, because we're not only about for the fires for personnel to get back then now, so I also want to be able to have the people, the occupant in the structure to be able to get out and and to the to the main road. I think it, I think it is enough space, it's it's enough space we use for extra requirements. I think three feet would work. Um, personally, I feel the a the larger area would would be more adequate.
Fair enough. So then, I agree with Mrs. Lewis that one of the three vehicles in the backyard should be, you should be limited to one vehicle twelve-foot-six inches or taller, not three vehicles. That's that is kind of ridiculous. And it still gives the person that, you know, maybe has one of those little pop-up trailers that condenses down that you wouldn't see, that that, because if you limit it to just one RV, then it's just limit it to one vehicle that's twelve-foot-six inches or higher. But still allowing for three vehicles to be parked back there. The three feet, it doesn't really bother me one way or the other. If if three feet is um, not acceptable and five feet is is more acceptable to to the folks up here, I can go along with that. The one thing I cannot go along with is limiting one vehicle in the backyard. I just, I think that when um, there are circumstances to where um, y- you know, we're we're talking about the bad actors, that chances are if they got four vehicles in their backyard or three of them, that are junkers, that are piled up back there, they got weeds that are six-foot tall back there, and we got a whole other host of issues that we can go after them in order to make them clean that up. The the one thing that I I, Stacy has stated, and and I'm I'm happy about in this ordinance is is this ordinance is is basically taking all these little pieces that we had in a bunch of different places, and now we're putting it all into one. And um, and I'll go back to, you know, my original statement is is all these issues that we're discussing, most of them um, are already currently in our ordinance. And so it goes back to an enforcement issue. So I I I support the ordinance as it's written. I would, I would be amenable to the five-foot or three-foot, whatever the majority of council wants to do, but I would, I would not be able to support uh, limiting it to one vehicle.
What about one recreation?
One, one vehicle twelve-foot-six inches or higher.
All right.
Or maximum of twelve-point-six inches of height.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis, did you want to make a uh?
Uh, yes, I um, I wanted to clarify that Stacy did indicate earlier that in, I think it's twenty twenty-seven under minor adjustments, that there could be other small recreational vehicles in the backyard.
But that would be up to you.
That would be, yes, and if the minor adjustments um, was not changed, but that would, that is still on the basis that there was three vehicles, um, even limiting it down to one vehicle, um, it still would require a hardship, that hardship would have to have certain findings. So it wouldn't just be an automatic that they can have, you know, an RV plus two smaller equipment. They would have to apply for a hardship, they'd have to be granted one, I'd have to post that to the three-hundred-foot radius. And somebody could appeal that, it's not an automatic granting.
So under C of um, tw- uh, well, the last four digits, twenty twenty, where it says no more than three vehicles in the backyard, um, and it indicates various types of vehicles, um, which, let's see, well, it includes automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, recreational vehicles, uh, and campers, um, blah, blah, blah. There's nothing in here that gives a limitation height. So the this, if if the council permit, um, could we put a limitation height on this so we don't have, you know, you know, anything that's over that six-foot fence giving uh, poor aesthetic vi- uh, um, visual aesthetics, bad visual aesthetics to a neighbor? That that's the concern that I have, because we're already dealing with the one large recreational vehicle that someone potentially can have in their backyard. But um, to have the other vehicles, the other three vehicles, I just feel like, you know, we need to limit the height on those so that they're not protruding out and being a nuisance. Because we, you know, I've heard people state that, you know, twelve-foot vehicles in the backyard would be just overwhelming.
I I thought that's what what we're we're talking about. One, it it, only one that's over twelve or twelve-six, and everything else had to be under them.
But I just want to clarify whether or not, we didn't, we didn't clarify that these three other vehicles, uh, because it falls under that little category.
Good point.
So I'm proposing that if we we, legally, we have six-foot fences around our perimeters, that these vehicles be no more than five feet high. So that they're not uh, invading the aesthetics of of other people's property.
Now, my suggestion would be to state that it be below the fence line, that it has to be screened by the fence line.
I would go with that.
And the purpose of that is that the building code does change currently right now, so the industry standard is six feet tall, but the building code does allow for up to seven feet without a building permit. Um, and so it just allows as building code changes for us to be able to adapt to it.
I I can agree with that. So if it's a a six-foot fence and it has below the fence, be below the fence line, if it's a seven-foot fence, same thing.
And could comply with, and then.
That would be fine.
So we would be allowing one recreational vehicle with a maximum of twelve-feet-six inches and the other, and everything else needs to be below the fence.
So does that need to be put in that particular part of the uh, ordinance under C that it's to be below the fence line?
So I think staff has enough direction, we would come back and and change that and, but that would be in the motion and in the second reading, right? City Attorney?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, go ahead.
I'm thinking we need to rewrite those two paragraphs and come back and reintroduce it.
Okay.
I don't, well, to introduce it.
Introduce.
I don't want to, I don't want to assume that we'll get the language right and come back here to adopt it and we don't have it right. So what I'm looking at is B and C can be reworked to meet what I'm thinking the majority of the council wants to see, which is three vehicles allowed in a backyard with all the other rec- um, requirements and no more than one twelve-feet-six inches tall. And the others have to be below the fence line.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing.
And then finally, um, in regards to my.
And five feet away from the fence and.
Well, that's what I'm getting to, my request to originally change it back to the uh, five-foot, which is in the original ordinance, is that, you know, we have to be mindful of people and and this is no dispersion, but we have people of different sizes. And three feet can be very restrictive for someone who can't get out of their home or uh, when a vehicle is parked that close, so. So let's not, you know, this is not just about property rights, this is about the health, welfare, and the safety of our community, allowing people to be able to get out of a situation when they're stuck, and you've got emergency people coming in to try to help them, it could be more than a notion. So two feet could make a big difference for someone trying to get out of their residence and into a place of safety.
Mrs. Silveira? So we could come back with both choices, and you guys could decide, is it five feet or eight feet? Okay.
So I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other discussion, Mr. Vaughn. I would like to make a motion to...
So wait a minute.
Change, because we can't introduce the ordinance.
No, I think we have the direction.
So we just need direct, yeah.
We continue the order, come back with...
So we don't need a motion, then?
No.
I'll motion to continue it, so that we don't have to leave notice at the public hearing.
Mr. Vaughn, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to a future council meeting, where the items that were discussed heavily at the dais can be addressed in a new and improved ordinance.
Emphasis on the heavily. Mr. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can...
We can do November 7th, that would be the next city council meeting?
Motion by Silveira, second by Faria, to continue the discussion of ordinance, or the, excuse me, the first reading and the introduction of ordinance number 1065, and the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. All right, let's go on to City, number 10, City Council Community Outreach Events. Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item as well.
Oh, there we go. Oh, wait a minute, let's try this one. There we go.
All right.
Forgot to count to three.
So I just put a brief presentation together, just as a visual, to kind of pull all of these ideas together. So currently, the City of Las Vegas does not have a policy for city council outreach events. This item was brought up by Councilmember Johnson Santos, and staff was directed to provide some various options for the city council's consideration. So historically, past mayors did hold parkside chats. This allowed the community to discuss various topics, and these were managed by the city clerk's office, which provided support to the mayor at these events. These events have not been held in at least over 10 years, and based on the comments that we received from the council, the council would like us to look into possible options. So the outreach events, this would be an opportunity to discuss various topics, it would give the community the ability to reach out and bring up various topics to their council members. It would allow council members to receive feedback from the community, and then city staff is requesting that the city council provide direction and feedback on the following options. So then the staff report, there's really three options that were provided, but that is not limited, that's not limiting the council to only those three options, or whether the council desires to create maybe a hybrid option, or create their own option. These were ideas that staff had had. So the first is a district chat. This would allow for each council member and the mayor to hold an event in their district every two years. So this would be a council member with the mayor at an event, this would be held on the first and third year of each council member's term. This was brought up because of a comment that, you know, we wouldn't want these events to coincide with campaigning, or conflict with campaigning, so this was to make sure that those events were held separately. So first and third year of each council member's term, and the council, the council member and the mayor would be present at these events. The mayor, council members are four-year terms, the mayor is a two-year term, so the mayor's terms would coincide with first and third years. The location and date would be coordinated between the council member and the mayor, and each event would have an allocated equal budget, just to be fair, this would be something that would be built into the budget, nothing's been built into the budget, we're asking for direction from the council at this time, and then to come back with a policy. Town hall meetings, this option, the city council meetings would be adjourned to a specific location and time, all city council members would be present, as well as department heads, this could be done annually, biannually, or quarterly, this would be at the discretion of the council, whether to set how often, these types of events would be held. It'd be an open forum for the community to ask questions, and as well as for staff in the council to hear updates, excuse me, it'd be for the community to hear updates on specific projects. So whether we're working on big projects, like the industrial park, or moving the airport, you know, the community could hear these updates directly from staff, or just to ask us, how's Wiener Schnitzel coming along? That's a common question that I get asked, and to be able to be out in the community and providing those, you know, very basic updates, it's a great opportunity. So that's just one idea. Another is parkside chats. So this is kind of taking what was historically done, and what kind of, what other cities do as well, each council member, including the mayor, would have their own event, so all five members would have their own event, it would be once a year at a location of their choice. It would be coordinated with the city manager's office, so the city manager would give his blessing on the date and the location, and it could consist of department heads, if that is at the pleasure of the council to include the department heads, and it would be at the discretion of the council or the city manager, whether he would want the department heads to be present at that event. And each event would be allocated in equal budget, so the theme here is that it would be equally fair, and that was kind of the same thing as with the district chats, is that each council member, it would be fair and equitable how those events would be budgeted. So that's just a breakdown of our thoughts of those options, and we're open to your questions and suggestions.
Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to Stacy and staff. Thank you, Stacy, for reaching out to me earlier as well, I do appreciate it. And we talked about hybrid ideas earlier, which I thought was really wonderful, like combining the town hall ideas with the parkside chats, and I am for that idea, I do like that if, at the discretion of the council, of course, if we could find a way to make a, bring up, or I guess, you know, I guess for just for informational purposes, I am for town hall meetings and then the parkside chats. I think those would be very good, to give each of the council members and staff options as to whether they want to go about this essentially individually, or to bring everyone in and benefit the residents that way, so, thank you.
Mrs. Silveira?
So, I like parkside chats, but I would like it to be called district chats, just because when you say parkside chats, now you're, it's kind of like, it's only going to be held in a park. The one part that I did like, or that I brought up, Stacy, is that we got to be cautious as to, you know, are they, be considered campaigning events or not. I think that as long as, if that person, if you put some language in there that says, you know, in an election year, that person, you know, that district, after July the 1st, you can't have it, or whatever it is, so that you stay away from the election stuff. But I like the idea of allowing each member, elected member, to kind of have, if they want to do it, they do it, if they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it, right? And the only other thing I would say is, is that seeing as how the mayor is at large, you know, maybe you give the mayor the opportunity to maybe have, maybe two or three of them at central locations throughout the city versus, you know, just having one that would, I mean, because the mayor has to cover the whole city, where council members can drill in more on their districts. The town hall meetings as a separate idea, I think it would be a good idea for the city to do, as staff, not necessarily council member side of things, but as staff, to have some, I think that when you have a town hall type forum, we don't, I don't know, and this is a question for Mr. Vaughn, is that, you know, we don't have, there's no agendized items or anything like that, where people can interact a little bit on a freer basis? Is that, or that, does that fall under the Brown Act?
No, you just agendize it as just that.
Okay. So, that's just kind of my thoughts, but I, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I mean, I don't, I think that these things, you know, there definitely has to be a reasonable number put on what's, you know, I don't, can't foresee the city spending $20,000, $30,000 a year to be hosting these things, that's kind of ridiculous. But, you know, for, I wouldn't think it would, even if we're not counting staff time, wouldn't cost us, you know, more than a couple hundred bucks to get material and those type of things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The word district chats, as we all know, we're going to be in districts after this election, every council member will have their own district, and the mayor remains at large. The parkside, the parkside chat annually, I like that idea, because I think each one of us will have similar concerns and different concerns based on the district that we're in, and we need to be able to address the issues that the people who we represent in our district have. So I think an annual meeting would be a good thing, whether we have it at a park, or if we can have it at the, not the big community center, but the small one over in the Tombs District, yeah, because it might be on a day where it's too cold or too hot to be outside, or it's raining, or what have you. Naturally, we wouldn't want to try to plan it for that, but anything can happen. So some people may want to be inside, and some people may want to be outside and have that chat. So I, me personally, I would like to see an annual event in your district, and have the mayor and possibly the staff coming to talk about how our cities run, and the things that are, that we do, and how our money's spent, so that people can be educated on the process. And that is really important, because a lot of people don't understand the process, they only understand their personal feelings about why we do or don't do certain things. So once they understand the process, I think it will help some to get things going. It'll give us the opportunity to talk about neighborhood watches, it's not just about how money is spent in our government, it's about encouraging our residents to watch out for one another, so that we can help our police department and be mindful of our neighborhoods and all the things that go on there. So that would, that would be the area that I would consider is under the category of parkside chats, but be considered more a district chat, rather than all the council coming together, because we've done that in the past, and it's just a certain group of people that show up all the time, and the idea is to get the people in your community involved, and get them to understand what you're doing, and to help them have a better and healthier life as they live in this community.
Well, my comments are, I have to be at all of them, and I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so you'll be at every district.
I'll be at every district, I'll be at my own, I'll, you know, whatever, and I think it's a wonderful idea, because then I get to be with a council member, and then at some point, I get my own event.
And it also gives us the opportunity to get the word out there for commissions, you know, to get people interested in applying to participate within the community, drawing that way. And I think a lot of people may have fears, or just don't understand what the process is, and not everybody has cable to hear what's going on at our council meetings when those things come up. So it's a good way of getting information out.
Good. Mrs. Silveira?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Faria?
I like the idea, to me, if the cost is the same for everyone, I think what the council member may, whatever district they're in, I would recommend that they can choose the format, so, and the location within their district, just as long as the money's the same. And, you know, for, every year, maybe springtime is nice, you don't have to worry about election season, but I like the idea, I think it's very good, especially as the town's growing and spreading, I mean, it's not like, you know, the town is quite spread, it's four miles across, and everybody's in their own neighborhoods, and I think it's a good idea, so.
We'll let you choose the cookies.
Okay.
Okay.
My wife will make them.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? All right, so I guess, do you have direction? You're okay?
I think I do. I did want to clarify that the intent of the parkside chat, although I hear, you know, district chats, which is fine, we can change the name to that, it would be each council member would have their own, so the mayor would have his own event, it wouldn't be the mayor coming to, so each individual, all five of you would have your own event.
I would come to all of them.
If you'd like, but this would be that that council member would create and design their own event.
Well, you know, yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea, but I just don't want to be accused as the mayor, whoever the district the mayor is in, and then they're going to have two events in that district. Sure, go ahead.
I agree, but then I just, I can go back some years before I was elected, where some council members at the time probably didn't want the mayor at, I mean, and so if you're saying that the mayor has to be in it, and I think that we kind of, you leave it up to the council member to...
Wants to invite the mayor or not?
Exactly. Just so then you're not, the council person, nor the mayor is not in a position of ended up going to something where, you know what I mean? It hasn't been that way, Mayor, in at least the eight years I've been here, but I remember...
I can't see these people doing that.
Well, I can remember nine years ago, it wasn't, it wasn't so good.
It wasn't so friendly.
No.
Yeah. But this group is, so thank you. So invite me, please, I want to come. All right. Alex, do you want to make your comment?
Just maybe...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Question for Stacy and the council, when would the expectation be that we would have our first event, and which council member would host?
Oh, there we go. Just... Yeah, okay, so let's, Mrs. Santos?
I would love to be the first, if that's okay, something I brought up, and I've been also wanted as well, but I would like to be the first, if that's okay. As for when, I'm going to have to think about that, to be completely honest, but as soon as possible would be great, I'd love, I mean, I guess Thanksgiving and Christmas isn't a great time to do that, but maybe, I guess we could push it into the new year, maybe something, as soon as the new year comes around, and give everybody enough time to get through the holidays, and not shoving it down their throats would be great, I guess.
Yeah, I'd like to let you do that first, because then we can find out what happens.
So staff would be proposing to come back with a resolution to create a policy, and then based on the adoption of that resolution, we'd also be working with the finance department, because I'd need the blessing of the finance director on a budget, so we'd be putting that together in a resolution to formally be adopted, and then we can, I think we'd start planning possibly some dates, feasibly, that probably would not happen until 2019.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. All right. Okay, anything else? We're good? All right, thank you. All right, let's go on to advisement of public notices. Item 11, we have two reports.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, we have, the first one is Shawnee City Village subdivision. This subdivision is 39.1 acres, and the proposal is to subdivide that acreage into 151 low-density and medium-density, single-family residential units. This was an originally old-approved tentative map, it was originally adopted in 2007, 2008, so with an old entitlement, that entitlement has expired, and this particular developer is requesting to reactivate that project, but on the request on the behalf of staff has redesigned it to a more efficient...
staff has redesigned it to a more efficient layout, lot layout. This particular project is located on Mercy Springs Road, north of Scripps Drive, this would just be south of, what is the old Kmart, the new Save Mart. We've had some questions asked about this particular property, it was a couple of months ago, it was just fallow agricultural land, and the new property owner cleared it, in anticipation of filing a tentative map, which would need to go to the planning commission for approval. And the second item is a site plan review and a conditional use permit for Bryce Howard. This is for a mini storage facility on H Street, it is also west of Second Street. Both of these items will be held on Wednesday, October 24th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the two reports? Okay. For clarification for the public, you know, I get this all the time, you're approving more homes in this community, these properties were already annexed, and not one person on this council annexed any of that property, so these, these properties have been annexed for a long time, they're finally coming to us with development maps, and they have the right to come to us with development maps. It's not something that we can stop, because the grants and everything granted to the property was granted a long time ago. So, please don't think that this council is, is, is doing this because we're bringing in new properties. The new properties have already been here for many, many years, now they're finally deciding to build homes on them. So, if you talk to any council member up here, I mean, please, be, just be a little considerate that they're not, they're not doing that. Is that a fair statement, Stacy?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to city manager's report, item 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Joan William, welcome, welcome to the team, look forward to big and great things from you, good to see you're at the council meeting tonight. Lupe, thank you for your work on the T-shirts, great work, good to see the fire crew here tonight, so Mason, please thank them, unless they're at home watching, which I doubt. And council member Silveira, it's, it's, you and I have been chatting over the last several meetings about your schedule, your last meeting, due to scheduling, I think this is, what, probably your last formal meeting, you won't be here at the next meeting due to the holidays, probably not at the November, last November meeting, so it's been a pleasure sitting next to you, I'm going to get, have to get used to someone new, I'm not sure who that'll be, but it has been a pleasure, best of wishes in your future endeavors, and don't be a stranger, so, thanks, Scott.
You are going to come and visit us, aren't you? Okay, all right, okay, let's go on to...
Said it?
Alex, anything else?
Yep.
Okay, let's go on to item 13, city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. Scott, I've learned so much, and I can always hear you in my head saying this needs to happen now, 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 so, thank you for all that you helped me with, and I know you're going to do great with the count, with the board, so I have no worries about that. There's not much to report tonight, I am sad that I missed the Tomato Festival, I had to work, but I'm sure it was a great event, as it always is, and thank you for the fire department for doing what you do, it's wonderful, and it was raising not much money, it's great, so, and thank you to staff for dealing with questions and time put into all this, and allowing us to go back and forth on all this, and being patient with us, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make another announcement, that on October 31st, from 5:30 to 8, there will be another annual Harvest Fun Fest and Trunk or Treat event at 821 West L Street. Everybody's invited in the community, bring your family, bring your children out, it's a lot of fun, a lot of food, prizes, and giveaways, so come out and enjoy the evening, and it's a safe and fun place to bring your children and your family, other than trick-or-treating on the streets. Yesterday evening, I had the opportunity to attend the Domestic Violence March, which we have annually here in Los Banos, and it's organization under Rosedale County, and has many arms that it reaches out to, and with other organizations under the umbrella, but we have an office here in Los Banos where they deal with people, men and women, who have been involved in domestic violence, to try to help them have a better lifestyle, and to escape the terrible tragedy that they're living in, and to be able to move into a more healthy lifestyle, and each year they have someone who gives a testimony about how this organization has been able to help them move on and have a better life, so it's, it's just really wonderful to see how people are able to just somehow, at a point in their life, say enough is enough, and I'm moving on, and I want to protect myself and protect my children. So, I, I really enjoy walking with the people who participate, and it's overwhelming to see the young people who come and march, and that's our next generation, and it's good for them to know and understand that domestic violence is not a way to settle issues in life. So, it was very successful, a good turnout, we had our newly-elected district attorney come and speak about the program, it's something that's near and dear to her heart as well, so I'm, I'm really happy that we had a good turnout, and I'm looking forward to next year's event, and I want to thank our police department for helping to sponsor that, and for every one of our volunteers in the police department to help keep folks safe as they cross the highways and the roads to get to the event. And in regards to the T-shirts, Chief, thank you, and tell Cassandra thank you for the choices she made, but next year, I'd like to have a Dalmatian shirt for the adults, so if you can put that little bug in her ear, I think she's probably heard that a lot already, that a lot of adults want that Dalmatian dog, so that might be something you might want to consider bringing back for next year. All right, thank you, and thank you to the council tonight for your time and your effort, and in hashing out that one particular ordinance that, that we're bringing back, I think it's going to be important to the community, and I want to thank staff for all the time and effort that you put into working on that ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Silveira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a community reminder, Lucy had sent it out to all of us, yesterday Memorial Hospital did a, just, it's like a walk-up flu vaccine clinic, I went and got mine yesterday, I mean, it is really, it's really simple, you just pull up right there, you walk up, you fill out a little bit of paperwork, they give you your shot, and you're on your way, and so they did that yesterday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and again, on October the 30th, they'll be doing, they'll be doing another one, so I've been hearing that flu season's going to be real bad this year, so I can't afford to get sick, so I said I'm just going to go ahead and give myself a little bit of sick now, so I don't get it later, so I just wanted to pass that along. Fire department, you guys always do a great job with the shirts, I unfortunately, because of just my crazy schedule the last month or so, didn't get mine ordered in time, but I brought out my, one of, this was, I think, the original, the original shirt, so I did come out and support, and then to staff, this is, so if the elections go the way that they've gone every two years since I've been on council, the county will certify the election, and the first meeting in December will be a ceremonial meeting, I will show up, and then you'll swear on the new council, and then I'll be on my merry way. Due to scheduling conflicts, I was going to be gone at the November meeting, the first meeting in November, staff's known about that for a while, that being said, they, they're going to cancel the second meeting in November, which I would, if I would have been here at the first meeting, I probably would have voted no on, but it's okay, I'm not going to be here in November, so this is my official last meeting, so I want to say to staff is that I, it, it's been a pleasure working with you, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you folks, not only on a professional level, but a personal level, and I still live in Los Banos, I still know all your guys' phone numbers, I'll be sure to call you, and especially if I have an issue in my neighborhood, call my council member, call staff, but more importantly, just come and check in on you guys, and, you know, maybe we can grab lunch or whatever, I do plan on, one of the things that I've done in speaking with the CEO of the county, we had the benefit of winning in June, I went and spoke with him, and one of the things that I want to do is, I want to keep office hours in Los Banos, and so we, I'm going to kind of wait and see what my schedule's going to look like, I don't know what that day of the week is going to be, but minimally, I want to be in Los Banos one day a week, so that I can be closer to my constituents, so those are things that I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to working with the city, having, I will just come from the city, having what I'd like to think is a pretty good knowledge base of, on what's going on, how things are run in the city, I think that we, we have a real good opportunity to do a lot of good work together. So, again, staff, I really do appreciate you, and to my colleagues, I know I've been a pain in your rear sometimes, but at the end of the day, what I do appreciate about every, every one of you is, is it takes a lot of courage to put your name out there, to run for office, and to, you know, take the heat that comes along with it, and so I do appreciate our, we haven't always agreed on everything, and I, a lot of times I think I'm right, just ask me, I'll tell you all about it, but what I will say is, is that I do appreciate working with all you folks, and I, I will look forward to working with you in the future. So, to that end, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Tonight, I agree with you. Okay, very good. All right, let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. T-shirts, fire, cancer awareness, breast cancer awareness, I think we've all lost somebody to that disease, or seen suffering from it, it's very, very powerful stuff, anything we can do to help, we're happy to do, you all do a great job over there, so we appreciate Today is the anniversary of Loma Prieta earthquake, you know, where were you in 1989? And it, it really had a huge effect on the Bay Area and life around the area, I had a good friend who was actually there at the, at the park, talked about it, so let's not, let's not forget, you know, these things that happen in our lives really have big impact. Good things in Los Banos, William and Joseph, good to see you here with us, nice to see Mark with all the help and support over there, the town handling the growth and the development that's happening, looking forward to seeing our, I love what we're doing, we're doing great things, positive things, and the people notice, and we all notice, and we appreciate it very much, appreciate everybody's work there. The drama, the Los Banos Community Theater, through the Arts Council, put on Beauty and the Beast, they did four performances, I went to one of them last week, and it was just magnificent, and anyone that says there's nothing to do in Los Banos hasn't, hasn't been in Los Banos. There was, the place was full, they packed the house that night, and I understand they had a packed house every, other nights, too, lots of work, lots of effort, donations, and parents, and volunteers make that all happen, and so continue to support those activities. Tonight, I was at Pacheco High School, they had a cultural or multicultural event, that was very exciting. Last night, we had Peace for Families for the domestic violence, very close, near, dear to my heart, too close for comfort in some cases, and so I'm very happy, we took, the choir sings for that every year, and the children, the choir kids really took it quite seriously, they actually made little pins, purple ribbons, for them to wear in solidarity with, with that group, very pleased, very pleased with that. And let's see, the last thing is, Scott, congratulations, you have, I know you're going to continue to represent, represent this district well, you understand the district well, and that's important, you know what the people need, and, and I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll benefit from your, from your work there, and thank you for your eight years here, and it's, you're right, it's not easy to sit here and take the heat, and it's, that's part of what it's all about, though, and so with that, thank you, I guess we'll have somewhat of an idea in a couple weeks, whether, how, whether things are, how things appear will change, if they do, so, have a wonderful, what's left of the month, and happy Halloween.
Okay, I'm going to let Mr. Silveira announce this, then.
I just wanted to say happy birthday to Mark, it's your birthday today, right? Happy birthday.
We can sing for him if you want.
Huh? One of us can sing for him.
Couple of us can sing for him.
I mean, to sound good.
Don't forget Mrs. Lewis.
Mrs. Lewis, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I deeply apologize, yeah, two people, yeah. I will not be singing, so happy birthday.
And, and Mrs. Santos was in my choir, too, and Mr. Silveira could play trumpet.
Thank you to the, the fire department, it's, you know, it's not just the fire department comes to work and goes home, that's not what happens, they come to work, they do what they need to do, and if there's anything else that needs to be done in the community, they do it, and this is just one example, and raising money for breast cancer awareness is such a worthy, worthy cause, and every year they, they do that, and they, they step up, and that's just only one department in, in, within the city council, and we have, I mean, within the city, that, 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 that's just one event, and there are many other events sponsored by departments, and we're very proud of, of everyone who works in the city of Los Banos, and, and, but for the fire, tonight's the fire department's night, and please tell the whole department thank you for us, okay? Billy and Joe, thank you, I'm glad you're back, and Joe, welcome, so if you need anything, please come and talk to us, talk to staff, everybody's really knowledgeable, and, but I, I don't think we have to worry about a thing, thank you. Tomato Fest, Tomato Fest was another, another great event this year, we had, some of us had, had a booth there, and, and we were just busy from the time it opened till the time it ended, it was well organized, and everyone was there to meet your needs, so thank you to Tomato Fest staff and, and everything that, to put it on another successful event. The Peace for Families March, it's, it's a nice event, but it's kind of sad that we have to have an event to say that we have to have peace for families, and with something that should be just a given for kids to grow up in a, in a, a family-friendly atmosphere, and not have to worry about violence, but we do, so we have these events, and I'm glad we do, because it gives people a chance to, to tell their story, and to get the needed help that they need, and, and the resources that are available in this community. The, what did I forget here? Oh, Scott, you know, I, you're right, we all, we all talk, and we all have our opinions, but this council, over the last eight years, or since you've been on, everyone got to say their piece, and, and if they had to say it two or three times, they got to say it, and, and I think that's important, thank you for being part of it, we, this is not goodbye, because you're going to, you're going to come to our meetings, and you're going to have office hours here, so, so we'll be talking to you, and, and you're still a part of this, this council, and, and we're a part of the county, so it's a two-way street, and we're, we're glad that you, that you got elected, and, and I know it's going to be a, a nice relationship to, to meet each other's needs, so thank you. And it's just important, like tonight, and this, and ending your meeting, your, your final meeting this way, where everyone kind of has their say on an issue, and then at the end of the meeting, we come up with a joint proposal.
Compromise is not a bad word.
Compromise is not a bad word, and, and I think the five members that are up here have done that. And, and I think the five members that are up here have done that successfully over the years. So I would say thank you, Scott, and thank you, council. So with that, I forgot anything? Is there anything else? Okay, all right. So let's go on to closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section 5495, 6.9 of the Government Code. Ninety-day notice of violations and intent to file suit under the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act of the California River Watch dated September 3, 2018. Item B, public employee's annual performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code, section 54957, title City Manager. If there's anything to report, we will do so after closed session. Other than that, have a nice evening.